Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the entrance. And if you would, please present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council meeting. And City Council is successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Housing Successor Agency Regular Meeting for October 23rd, 2018. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Pastor Dane Acker of Centerpoint Church. And our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our new City Attorney, Adrian Guerrero. And as you're standing for the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following.
Great. Well, thanks for having me. And let's pray. God, we just thank you so much for this city, the City of Grand Terrace, and we thank you for all the residents that live here. And we just ask your blessing on this meeting now and your blessing on this city. That, God, this city would prosper and it would serve its residents well, and that it would just be a light, sitting up here on the hill, a light to the whole inland empire and all of Southern California. God, I just ask that businesses would thrive here and schools would thrive, that every child would be wanted and every family would be happy. And Lord, we just pray that you give this group of people here wisdom, how to lead and guide this city. Lord, I know they volunteer their time and they work hard. There's many, many hours behind the scenes. And I just pray, Lord, that you make that up to them and that you just pour out a blessing on them. Lord, I pray for all the city employees as well, that this would be a happy place to work, a place where they feel like their time and their effort pays off. And that, God, you would just move in this city now and do a powerful thing here, as they want to develop land and as they want to take care of the people that are here, give them your wisdom. You promised that wisdom. If any man or woman lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, you say, who gives to all men and women liberally and without reproach it will be given to them. So pour that wisdom out on this group tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Dane. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome to our new City Attorney, Adrian Guerrero, from Alashereen Winder, and to our Assistant City Attorney, Robert Koo. All right, we'll move to the consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by City Council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item before further discussion. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent calendar?
Item number five, Madam Mayor.
Any others? All right. Is there a motion for the balance?
May I move approval for the balance? Second.
Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Hesse, for items one, two, three, and four. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Item number five from the consent calendar was amendment number one to professional services agreement with Lance Saul Lundhard, LLP, for financial auditing services. You had a question on that, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I prepared to support this item. I just wanted to note that the extension is for three years. I appreciate what's indicated in the staff report regarding the difficulty in changing auditors, particularly for a city as small as Grand Terrace with limited staff. Having said that, I think Madam Mayor and the Mayor Protem will recall that the prior auditor had been with the city for the better part of a dozen years before we selected the current firm. And having had experience with the current firm, they're exemplary, their work is very good, I just think that maybe the three-year extension should be reconsidered, if not tonight, at some point in time in the future, the council can have a discussion about that, as to whether or not the extension and a two-year option after that is appropriate, given the four years or almost four years of service that have already been provided to the city. So, to sum it up, as a former longtime staff person for cities, it's difficult to give up or potentially give up an effective, professional, successful work relationship. But in terms of the financial management procedures that the council adopted in 2014 and affirmed and amended in 2016, it might be appropriate to shorten the timeframe for this extension, or at least discuss at some point in time in the future whether or not an RFP for audit services should be issued in the next few years or so. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Do we have an option to extend it for fewer than three years?
Not in the staff report that I wrote, Madam Mayor. My request was a three-year extension from the original contract and an additional two years after that.
Okay, and so in the original contract, is that all that we're able to look at as a three-year extension?
No. What the original contract just said, that this contract may be extended with a supplemental agreement. It did not give any restraints on how many years or how long the contract extension should be. However, should City Council want to consider a shorter term, that is something that staff is amenable to, willing to develop.
Mr. City Attorney, if we took action on this and we extended for three years, would it make it difficult to come back and shorten that?
No. You'd be able to terminate the contract if need be, if we prefer. If you would consider a shorter time period, I would suggest not adopting this tonight, bringing back an amendment with a shorter time period with no extensions, so that you would go out to RFP sooner time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Henderson, do you have a motion to make?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would recommend approval of this item with the proposed three-year extension, but not the two-year, the potential for a two-year extension after this initial three-year extension.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Mayor Protem.
It's, we question, how many years have we had them now? Because it seems like it ran really quickly. They've been with us, how many years?
Mayor Protem, we've had them for five audit years. This is our fifth audit year.
Yeah, because, again, I thought they were absolutely excellent, but I also, too, we kind of had a standard where we didn't want to get complacent in having not, you know, a RFP process or a time where we really say, what are we doing here? So I would be more amenable to shortening the time to a two-year period and then having an RFP. I just don't want, I think they've been here five years, so that would be seven. It's almost going to be approaching a decade, closer to a decade. So if you would consider that.
Okay, so there's a motion right now for the three-year and to not have another two-year extension on there.
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Okay, so that one dies for lack of a second. And Mayor Protem, did you have an alternate motion you wanted to make?
Yes, I wanted to make a motion that we approve it for a two-year period and then come back at the end of two years of an RFP process.
I'll second that.
Okay. And so would this whole contract or this whole item need to come back to us?
If the council also includes, in the motion also includes direction to the City Attorney to prepare the amendment with that direction, it would not require.
Okay. Can I amend my motion to direct the City Attorney to amend the contract terms?
I'm in my second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Was there anyone that wanted to comment on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion for a two-year extension, asking staff to bring that, to move forward with it in that manner. And we will go out to RFP at the end of that contract, and we have a second. So Mayor Protem made the motion, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Henderson and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo votes yes, Councilmember Wilson votes no.
All right, thank you. We'll open public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also be agendized for future meetings. Are there any requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we'll bring it back to council communications. We'll begin with City Councilmember Kenneth Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a few comments for those in attendance in the viewing audience. I had the pleasure, along with the mayor and my council member colleagues, attending the 40th anniversary picnic and car show. And I wanted to take the time just briefly to compliment the volunteers who were involved in that effort and staff. We had inclement weather that day, but it did not dampen the enthusiasm and the enjoyment of those who took it upon themselves to attend in somewhat difficult weather conditions. Had an excellent band, excellent representation by local restaurants and other businesses and vendors. So I'm very appreciative of the work put in by the volunteer group. I don't want to miss any names, but I know that Karen Suarez and Becky and her husband, Mr. Drew, and staff and others, Johan Gallo, were instrumental in bringing this about along with Mr. Duffy, Ms. Fortune, Mr. French, the maintenance staff. It was a really good effort, and I thank my council colleagues for attending as well. On October 16th, I attended the County Board of Supervisors meeting on the Fire Protection Zone Five expansion, the County Board of Supervisors acting as the Fire District Board of Directors. And it was a very, very interesting proceeding. Mr. Hesse, myself, Mr. Duffy, I think we all arrived around 10 o'clock. And by my estimation, in talking to some former colleagues who continue to work for the county, it was the longest public hearing that I've been associated with. Over 100 speakers, the public commentary lasted from 1:00 to, including the vote counting, to about 7:00 that evening when the final vote was taken. 100% of the more than 100 speakers spoke out against the expansion of FP5 and the assessment that was proposing to be imposed by the Fire District Board of Directors. For several moments there, I thought that there were so many eloquent comments presented to the board. There were teleconferencing participants from Yucca Valley, from Joshua Tree, from the High Desert, along with those present in the audience, who spoke at length about the hardships and what the county could expect from this process. Nevertheless, the board voted 3-2 to impose the assessment, which is $157 and change annually, going up 6% a year, I believe, for as long as the assessment's in place. So it's a difficult proposition. There are at least two lawsuits pending against the county on this matter. I know that our new City Attorney and staff are monitoring the status of those lawsuits. I know that the City of Upland officials told me that there was a December 10th hearing on their issue that we should probably take note of. And so all at this point, the only thing that we have to hope for is the legal cause of action filed against the county might have sufficient merit for this process to be overturned. Also attended Terrace Hill Middle School Soccer Field Ribbon Cutting, along with my colleagues. Great event, great facility. I mean, you know, if you've been to any of our youth soccer programs, it's just crazy how much excitement goes on and how much the community benefits from it. So this brand-new soccer field is just going to be a tremendous addition to our youth sports program. And I also wanted to compliment staff, Mr. Duffy and staff in particular, regarding the announcement of Grocery Outlet coming to Grand Terrace and the old Stater Brothers store. That's a wonderful addition to our commercial landscape. Grocery Outlet has a chain of over 300 stores, a family-owned operation, should do very, very well. And the point I really want to make about Grocery Outlet is that, in addition to the homes that are being built in the community and the interchange project that's going on, and other economic development projects that are in the, we should be able to implement in the near term, I think we have a really good chance of establishing the kind of momentum that will enhance our property tax revenues and our sales tax revenues going forward. This is a tough deal to put together, so my compliments to Mr. Duffy and the staff. And hopefully, this is just the beginning of more good things to happen in terms of the development front and economic opportunity for the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came out. Thank you, Pastor Dane, for your prayer. I'm used to listening to you on Sunday, so see you again. It's nice seeing you. Just wanted to say, yeah, the soccer field is a great grand opening. It was long overdue. You know, I know we had it in the works a while back, but unfortunately, you know, with the droughts and everything else, and the state put restrictions on it, so I'm glad to see it's finally in. I actually went to a soccer game last night, and the kids are saying it's kind of getting, or they're trying, getting used to playing on grass now instead of dirt, so they kick the ball, doesn't go as far, I guess, so. Also, I attended the football game Friday night, Colton versus Grand Terrace, is a really good game. I was thinking that maybe we should do something, maybe talk to the principal, you know, how like Rev and Redlands has a Smudge Pot Bowl, something between Grand Terrace and Colton, some kind of bowl game. It's kind of hard, you know, I voted for both teams because my sons played on Colton. I have a lot of roots in Colton and stuff, but it was really great to see the parents and everybody on the Colton side and everybody else. Of course, you know, it's all in fun, and, you know, I didn't wear my Colton championship, sure, I went out in my Titan gear, so just to represent the city. But it was a good game, the boys played well, it was a good experience, and I'm proud of both teams. And the car show, yeah, it was a great event. And like I said, the only reason why it rained, because everybody washed their cars, so we need that more often this winter. And I want to thank everybody who came out there and made it, you know, a great event, especially, you know, the city staff. And as Pastor Dane said, you know, thank the city staff, because they came out there and go, hey, you're getting paid for it. You know, you don't get OT. OT was back in, my captain called it, your own time, or were you voluntold? But no, they all came out here, they wanted to do it, and I appreciate the city staff working with everybody and the residents and stuff, and they're really good out there, taking up time from their family to come out here and support our city. But I wanted to say something about Mr. Henderson's car, if we have skid marks in the road, it's from his car right there, because that's like the same thing, the DeLorean Back to the Future, that thing's pretty fast, so it was a nice car. Also, the FP5, I didn't get a chance to go in there and speak because I got held up in the lobby, and it was pretty heated in the lobby that time, so I didn't stay around that long, but it was a lot of people concerned. I think Mr. Duffy put out the only 11,000, turned in their form, which is a far cry from 150,000. So it was interesting, it was interesting talking to a lot of people. A lot of them were from the High Desert, La Cern area and stuff, that they thought it was unfair tax, and it's just not right, so we have to move on on that. And then I attended the SWAT meeting. Now, the council tricked me, it's not SWAT for Special Weapons Team, it's a solid waste authority, so that's my, I attended that. It's a pretty good meeting, we go once every six months, but they're working on a thing for edible food recovery, and I sent Mr. Duffy the outline on that. We had to have by the year 2022 an ordinance in place with the city for us to have for the edible foods we recycled in our residence. I know, and by 2025, it's got to be implemented. It's a long, drawn-out process, there's a lot of questions for cow recycle, like, well, how are we going to enforce that? They're talking about three different recycle bins. And the county supervisor asked, well, who's going to pay for that? And Cow Cycle's recommendation was to have our code enforcement go out and write citations and go through the trash and make sure they get, and I go, that's just crazy. That's just, you know, my pastor, sir, I can't say anything else, but that's kind of, you know, it's ludicrous, but, so that's the thing that's coming down the works. They want to knock out 50% meth gas, dumps, and a lot of other things, so. And one last thing, I know election's coming up, and we're not going to be here for that, so I just want to wish everybody good luck, and even the other residents who are running, best of luck, and whoever gets elected, remember once we're elected and in our positions that we have to work for the betterment of the city and for our residents. That's the main goal. We put everything behind us, and we move forward, and we have to work together, so best of luck for everybody, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just also like to put in my couple of cents for the 40th anniversary. It never fails, kind of like the NHRA Winter Nationals, if you're going to have an event, it's got to rain. I mean, it's just a standard thing. And if it has anything to do with cars, of course, it's going to rain. But still, you know, I applaud the staff and everybody that was involved, all the volunteers and so on. It was a terrific event, considering the fact that we had so much rain. The Terrace Hills Soccer Field Ribbon Cutting, that was a terrific event, just the concept of it was important, but I have to admit that I was a little melancholy coming back across that field. I used to watch my granddaughter over there in the dirt most of the time, and now she's up in college and up in Washington, and it's a whole different world. They should stop the clock every once in a while. I'd like to say, though, in relation to the fire item, shame on our supervisor Ramos for voting, you know, for this thing, because I thought he had some, you know, our thinking in mind, and for some reason, that didn't happen. Stretching the boundaries beyond a reasonable amount, that thing started out in Hellendale, and all of a sudden, the annex district, or the, yeah, the annex district has become a great monster. And I wish the attorneys that are representing the alternate opinions well, because, just because somebody doesn't want to supplement the money anymore isn't necessarily a good reason why, you know, we should be shouldering the burden. I just think that when we start to do these kinds of things with taxes or fees, we are in danger. We are in danger of serfdom, which is an ugly place to be. So I think it's something that needs to be tried in the public arena, and we'll see if it survives. We have the county fair that is going to be coming. I think it's on November 3rd.
Country Fair.
Oh, yeah, Country Fair, I'm sorry. I can't read my own writing, which is not a surprise.
Because it's in Grand Terrace, it's not elsewhere in the county. But it is November 3rd, you're correct.
Yeah. So it's for the whole country. So the Country Fair is going to be coming, and let's hope everybody is able to make it to that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem, Sylvia Robles.
I'm going to make this very brief. I attended the monthly meeting of the Ametran's Administrative and Finance Committee, the soccer field opening, the Grand Terrace 180th birthday. And I also want to say to all the staff and all the volunteers on the 40th birthday party, you did an excellent job. I had fun. The band was so good, I thought I should dance, and so I kind of, instead of doing one, I did three. And my knees, because they're kind of a little bit arthritic, bore the brunt of it. But then walking, I told Rodney, I says, well, I bought these high heels I really wanted to wear, so I came walking very gently over here, so, you know, I'm a woman. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll report on my two SBCTA meetings. They were pretty brief, this is a good time of year for that, there's not a lot on their agendas. General Policy Committee on October 10th, we recommended to receive the fiscal year 1819 Initiatives and Action Plan for the first quarter. We also reviewed a resolution identifying a housing shortage as a critical priority. There was quite a bit of discussion about that at the General Policy Committee as to the wording and what we were really trying to accomplish by that. So based on our discussion, we asked staff to come back to us with that, with a different resolution, with different wording. We also received a federal legislative update. At the Metro Valley Study Session on October 11th, we received major project status report through September 2018. And then we received a preview of resolutions to consider, excuse me, hearings to consider resolutions of necessity for two particular projects. One of them was Interstate 10 Corridor Contract One, that is the Express Lane Project, and that will be going through the cities of Montclair, Upland, and Ontario. And then also the Archibald Avenue Improvement Project. We also recommended approval of transfer of Measure I savings from South Millikan Grade Separation Projects to Amontavista Grade Separation Project to backfill the reduced availability of federal projects. October 13th, as my colleagues mentioned, the car show and picnic, that was a very nice time. And I know that staff and our volunteers put a lot of work into that. And there's this discussion about the rain, and my take on the rain is this, when it rains on a wedding, they say that the wedding is, or that the marriage will be fruitful and will be prosperous. And so I'm believing that because on our 40th anniversary celebration it rained, that that bodes well for prosperity in the future for the City of Grand Terrace, and that's how I'm choosing to look at that. Our Girl Scout troop, 76, they came in and did a nice little presentation of colors for us a few meetings back. They adopted a Thunderbird from the US Air Force who died in the line of duty, and they have dedicated a plaque to him on our Veterans Wall. They were invited out to Los Alamos Air Base last Friday for a meet and greet, and they did a show of colors for the Thunderbirds, and they did a nice little ceremony, and they presented to both the Thunderbirds and the family of the fallen Thunderbird. And I had the honor to accompany them and see just what fine young women they are becoming. And they really do support our military, and they are understanding the sacrifice that they make. And lastly, I wanted to say that there's a certain young man named Zachary Smith who watches our council meetings. He lives on Terrace Pines Road, and if he's watching, I just wanted to give a shout out to him. And with that, I'll conclude my report. We have one item of business, item number six on our agenda, which is participation in the California Statewide Community Development Authority Open Pace Program. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Sandra Molina. I'm the Planning and Development Services Director for the city. So I'll present this item, and this is consideration to participate in the California Statewide Community Development Authority Open Pace Program. And so in 2012, some members of the council may recall that the council opted in with a memorandum of understanding to participate in the PACE program, Property Assess Clean Energy Program. And that was administered by the SABAG, which is now SBCTA. But this program was discontinued on June 30th, 2017. And so with the discontinuance of the program, property owners within the city don't have an option to participate in a PACE program. And this slide was out of order, but this project or this presentation, this item does support our 2030 Vision Statement. But to move forward with the PACE program, the PACE program allows property owners to contract for the financing of energy-efficient improvements. Property owners that participate in the program do need to qualify for financing, and the payment of the loan that's financed through this program is assessed payment of the, the loan that's financed through this program is assessed and collected through property tax bills of the property owner. The California Statewide Community Development Authority is a joint powers authority that operates an open PACE program, and so it's, it's very similar to what SBCTA was operating before they discontinued the program. But energy efficient improvements would qualify, water efficiency improvements, and also seismic strengthening improvements are also part of improvements that would be qualified through this program, and also electrical vehicle charging infrastructure. So these types of improvements would apply to both commercial and residential properties within the city, and so it's open for all property owners. And so mainly residential property owners participate in the program, and so you have solar panels, which is qualified improvement, residential EV charging, and then also even energy efficient windows, or just some of the type of improvements that could be covered in this program. So the CSCDA does administer the program, they pre-qualify financing providers, they also require that contractors are registered with the program, and so anybody, any resident or commercial property owner has assurance that the contractors are registered through the program and have been vetted. They also secure the revenue for the program through bond proceeds. So for the resident, the benefits is that they, there are a number of financing companies they can choose from. It's voluntary, property owners don't have to participate, but if they do, they enter into agreement to repay the loan. And then I guess, again, the assessment is through the property tax bill. For the city, there's no staff support required, the CSCDA would administer all aspects of it, we have no financial obligation, but if we do participate, the city receives regular updates on projects that are completed in the city. Mr. Dustin Reilich with Renovate America is present in the audience, and he's available to also make some comments on this proposal. But staff's recommendation is for the council to discuss this program and consider whether they would like to participate in it so that property owners in the city could finance energy efficiency type of improvements. Should the council wish to do so, there's a resolution attached to the staff report that the council would adopt, and upon its adoption, we would forward it to the CDCSA and let them know that we would like to participate in the program. And with that, I completed my presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any, any comments the, or questions the council has.
Thank you, Director Molina. Does council have questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson.
I'd just like to hear from, I forgot the gentleman's name, but like to hear what he has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I want to thank City Manager Duffy and his staff for putting together a great staff report on this. I'm Dustin Reilich, I'm the Senior Director of Municipal Development for Renovate America. I'm one of the open PACE providers under CSCDA's Open PACE program, and I also represent the HERO program, which was previously through Sandbag. The Sandbag program that was previously before you, many of your citizens did utilize that program, I don't want to say many, sorry, 167 altogether, and I know that your city clerk passed out a couple of pieces of paper to you that actually, that actually referenced those 167 projects that have been completed. You have 10 local contractors that actually are involved in our program, but have been unable to, to offer services to your homeowners, and we've actually had homeowners that have been reaching out to us, also wanting to be able to do energy efficiency and water efficiency upgrades for their homes. The history on the HERO program under Sandbag was that when the program started, there weren't as many safeguards in place, and we found out, unfortunately, that there were some unsavvy contractors out there with their presentations and so forth, and we got rid of all of those contractors, or at least I'm going to say 99.99%, because you can never get rid of all bad contractors, but we have a vetting process, a compliance process, to make sure that the nothing but the best of the best contractors are working with your homeowners, making presentations properly, and making sure that we worked with the state legislature to make sure that rules and regulations are put into place statewide, to make sure that there's protections for your homeowners, and make sure that there's certain things that contractors have to do, make sure that there's certain disclosures, we've worked very closely with the real estate community. We have IVAR, TIGAR, EVAR that have all gone to a neutral position on PACE, and they were against it before. Because of all the progress that we've made over the last probably two and a half to three years, this is a program that really will help your homeowners, not every homeowner, but some homeowners that do need options for financing, energy efficiency and water efficiency projects. And projects that, that come to mind are, whether it's solar or HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, or being able to replace their doors and windows, or do climate controlled irrigation, these are the types of projects that homeowners are doing, and HVAC is actually one of the leading things that, that your homeowners are utilizing, and probably about 40% of your homeowners replace their HVAC systems using the program. I know I met with your mayor probably a couple of years ago with Laura Morales through the League, because the CSCDA program is through the League of California Cities, and I know that she had concerns, because there were homeowners that had approached her, and I'm sorry that that ever happened, and we are doing everything in our power to make sure that never, ever happens to anyone again where they don't know exactly what they're getting into. So there's confirmed term calls, where homeowners go through a call with us on the line, it takes about 20 to 30 minutes, depending on the homeowner, to make sure that they understand all of the terms, make sure that we go through it very, very slowly with them, and then they initial next to each one of those disclosures, making sure that they understand that if they sell or refinance their home, they're going to most likely have to pay off this assessment. So this is a long-term financing structure to help someone to be able to finance long-term some sort of upgrade for their home, to beautify their home and make it more efficient. I'm a perfect example, I use the HERO program for solar at my own home, I did our five-year financing, because I'm a fiscal conservative, so I decided that I wanted to make sure that I paid it off in a timely manner. I'm three years into my assessment, and I have two years left, and I haven't had a utility bill in three years. Now, that doesn't apply for everyone, but for my case, I haven't had a utility bill, and I'm just ecstatic about that, and so is my wife and my kids that get to leave the lights on and not hear me bitch about it. Apologize. But I just wanted to make my case that I've been working very closely with some of you on council, with, with your city manager, to bring this item forward. I think we're actually at a good point now, where the Department of Business Oversight has good oversight on the program, they're making sure that everyone's licensed and making sure that all of the, all of the providers are doing the right thing, and I think that we've legislated it to death, to where now there's so many safeguards in place. I think this is an option for your homeowners, not for all of them, but for some of them, where they do need this type of option, and I would hate to have you be the only city other than Needles, because Needles has not opted into the program, and that's just my fault, I haven't driven out there, to be able to make this program voluntarily available to their constituents here in San Bernardino County. I'm here for any questions that you may have, I don't want to speak too much, but if you have questions, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reilich. Are there questions at this time? Councilmember Hussey.
Yes, sir. Can you tell me what the interest rate's going to be for the, I'm sorry?
Yes, of course.
What's your average interest rate for the program?
So our average interest rate has been running just shy of 7%, but we have start rates on the five-year term that are 2.99% on a five-year term, and it's fixed financing. So in the past, under the Sandbag program, our rates started at 9.25, and they were set at that 9.25. So unfortunately, there were some heavy fees that were associated with it, and we've actually found a way to utilize the, the money markets better, and of course, we're a five-and-a-half-year-old program, six-year-old program now, so the money markets have been more accepting of property assessed clean energy, and in the beginning, we didn't know whether we would even be able to securitize the bonds and so forth. So it's brought down rates and made it much more competitive.
So speaking of competitive, are your prices pretty competitive as far as the HVAC systems and everything else, you know, they compare apples to apples with your company?
Yeah, what we actually do is we make sure that, that homeowners are aware that they should definitely get multiple bids on the process. I always say, please, get three multiple, three bids at least, when you're looking at what you're going to do to upgrade your property. Every contractor's going to be different on what they offer, but what we do have is we have checks and balances through our compliance department to make sure that there's not overpricing or gouging going on, and those aren't things that were in place five, six years ago when the program started.
Okay, last question. If a homeowner does your program and they decide to do reverse mortgage, is that going to affect them with the reverse mortgage?
It will, yes. So with a reverse mortgage, since what you're doing is taking out equity in your property, you would have to repay the assessment during that reverse mortgage. So say you were doing a reverse mortgage and there were $200,000 worth of proceeds coming to you, you would actually be paying off that assessment, because it is a lien against the property to make sure that it is paid for in full, so that they still have the secured interest under the reverse mortgage process.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question for you.
I'll get my exercise.
I didn't, I didn't wait till you sat down.
I know, that's good.
I will, I'm wondering if, if I were to look at this project that I wanted to do, say I want a new HVAC, and I went out and found a contractor that I wanted to work with, but they were not registered under your program.
Right.
How difficult would it be for them to register?
Well, they need to be licensed, bonded, insured, they have to register with our program, and because of the, the oversight by the Department of Business Oversight, they do have to go through mandatory training on the program as well. But what we've done is we've worked across all the different PACE providers to make sure that once they get trained on how to utilize PACE, that it works for all providers. So with, with the Open PACE program, you can utilize any of the different funding sources or other funding sources that are through PACE in the future. It's a very short process, they can do it normally within 24 to 72 hours to get themselves on board and, and approved with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions before Mr. Reilich sits down? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, well, I will open it up for public comment, are there any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of the resolution of the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace consenting to the inclusion of properties within the territory of the city in California statewide at all.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Henderson, second by Councilmember Hussey, and I will say that I was very skeptical about this, but I, it does sound like that things have been placed in order since Sandbag decided not to take part in this. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. Let's see, City Manager Communication, Mr. Duffy.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, shall provide my quick City Manager update. So just want to remind the council and the residents at home that on Wednesday, October 31st, it's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., we'll have our truck or treat, or trick or treat, come by and get candy and win prizes for your outstanding costumes, and bring your dog, there's a dog contest, dog costume contest also, and it's at Richard Rollins Park, and we'll see you there. Also, we have, as some councilmembers mentioned earlier, on Saturday, November 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we have the Country Fair, and this year's a part of our 40th anniversary, we've added a few additional items to the Country Fair. There'll be live music and also a farmer's market, in addition to the traditional items of craft sales and food cook-off contests. And also, on November 11th, this Veterans Day, on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., we have the veterans at Freedom, Freedom Park, we'll have a celebration of Inland Empire veterans, and the council, about four months ago, sent out letters to all the councils in the Inland Empire, that's Riverside County and San Bernardino County cities, and we had over 30 cities responding, as far away as Wildamar to San Bernardino, Riverside, Marino Valley, Colton, Marietta, Barstow, Needles, Hemet, Indian Wells, and Barstow, just to name a few. And so we are expecting to have a really great turnout at the event on November 11th. The inductees ceremony starts at 3:00 p.m., there's food trucks that will be there from 11:00 a.m. until close of the ceremonies, and then at dusk, there will be a laser light show over the Wall of Freedom. So we look forward to having everyone in attendance for that particular event. Also, as, as some of the councilmembers announced, we've been working this deal, I'm sure the council's been really sort of tired of getting my weekly economic development updates where we're close, we might be close, we're closed, we might be closed. So the Viking Properties finally signed an agreement with Grocery Outlets that take about 18,000 square feet of the former State of Brothers site, and so we anticipate Grocery Outlet opening in late spring of 2018, and we received a number of positive comments from residents, 2019, I'm sorry, a number of positive comments from residents as we posted this, these items, you know, I'll shop there daily, it's a great store, it's a discount store, bring it on, it's awesome, I go to the one in Inglewood, good quality stuff. My sister and I were exalted that, excited about this and getting one in here in Grand Terrace. We texted my mom in orange right away, because she loves the store, and we're so jealous, she, we're so jealous, and now it's cool to have one in Grand Terrace. Also, we had some other comments, but then there's also someone posted this particular video, and I don't think we have sound. Do we not have sound?
Bargonomics.
I'll bring it back another day. So that concludes, that concludes my report, and we are very excited to finally land that important space, right in the corner of Barton and Mount Vernon, because there's over 28,000 cars per day at that particular intersection. There's actually more traffic at that intersection than there is at the, off of the freeway of Barton Road, off ramp. So we're looking forward to hopefully that, landing that particular business, and, and the impact it's going to have on that shopping center, and we're already getting some additional traffic, because the notice is out about this particular store. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. We have no closed session tonight, so at this time, I will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting to be held Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and requests will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.